All right, it's six o'clock for another five seconds. It's all right with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kick right off with recognition.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the last meeting of 2024. Just want to recognize a few staff members for some amazing events that have taken place in the last few weeks. I want to start off with Trish Tarantino, who organized and once again ran Coco with cops. This is an event that we've had for several years where we bring in local police officers to meet, to have some cocoa, and to do some crafts with elementary school students. This was a snow day. This event was usually scheduled for the day we had our snow day, so we scheduled it last Thursday. I want to thank Stuko again for helping the day out with some of the organizing of the event, and Mr. Murphy, obviously, for kind of hosting the event. I want to thank Tabby LeBlanc and Kayla Malone and Student Council once again for having a Christmas in North Brookfield event. Again, this is a tradition that's been going on for 20-plus years, and this is a way for our student council, and I believe Dante, you were involved with us again, to bring in our families and give them access to students and staff and celebrate the holidays. And there's a lot of games and raffles for our youngest students. So this is, again, another nice event that the district does for its community. We also want to thank John McNeil, who we mentioned at the last meeting. A new tradition we're starting here. He is, John is in the Army Reserves, and along with members of his battalion hike down to the police station with our toys that we donate to our Toys for Tots program every year. He was met this year by DA Joe Early, and they did some pictures and they had some meet and greet down at the police station. So thank you again, Mr. McNeil, for taking that on, and thank you for all the families who donated to our Toys for Tots program to support families for a better holiday season. Last announcement I have, I just want to introduce Danielle Graham, who's to my left. She is our new business HR assistant. I asked Danielle to come tonight and just say hello. But she has been on the job for about a week, what over a week?
Yeah.
And she's still working in this school field to kind of get after speed when it's going on, but we're very excited to have Danielle off to a great start, so we're very happy to have her in that role. That's it, you see?
Great. Move the minutes. You've all received the packets. Does anyone have any? Oh, first of all, can you... Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes from Monday, November 18th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Nancy won't say it, but her name was spelled wrong in the minute.
Oh, sorry.
It's spelled right at the top, though.
It's okay.
You're typing super fast, so it's...
Yeah, it's okay.
I got you covered, Nancy.
Thank you. You are very kind.
That was it. Everything else was awesome.
In lieu of all, of that all change...
We'll just make corrections on future ones.
Want to vote to approve the minutes. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Just when Brandon Avery's, you know, putting these in the archives someday, I want Nancy to get full credit.
It's a different Nancy.
Oh, yeah, maybe she could just type the nationality, but it wasn't me.
That might have been my alter ego.
There's been a few of us here, right?
That's your official AKA.
Public participation? Nothing. Communications? Let's see. See what works. Does anyone have any communications to discuss?
I wanted to get that email you responded to.
Yes, I received a email concern regarding volunteer coaching position and... The... Very heartfelt. I'm not going to read it all out here, but... The basic gist of it is that there is fear of retaliation for past position, but it doesn't really apply. This is after consulting with council, and as far as the coaching position goes, it's not in the school committee's purview. Coaching positions are filled at the discretion of the superintendent and principal. So... That's basically that.
I would like to address one of these paragraphs in here that is not speaking about the retribution, but the concern that I have regarding this person's talk about having a lengthy restraint with a child and being covered with bruises, and then her decision to then put her notice in. And also that it's notes here that the concerns regarding safety started back in April of 2023 and then in October of 2024. And she felt like her voice wasn't heard when she expressed that she didn't feel that the classroom was safe or was running the way it should be running. And I know that we have other parts in the agenda to discuss that, so I don't know if we want to wait till that part to discuss the rest of this. But being that she's not the only one left that left that classroom, it's concerning to me as a school committee member and a mother to children who are in the district, even if they don't attend school here, that there are safety concerns that caused an entire classroom to quit, and including additionally the BCBA, who is a behavior analyst, who's, I would assume, is also connected with this classroom. So I don't know if we want to wait till we talk about departures or if we wanted to use that as part of this correspondence discussion.
I think we can wait till that portion because this is just, you know, this is what's been received. I don't know if there's any more that we need to address in this...
Okay.
This meeting note. This is received and, again, discussed with council, so we can discuss the, that aspect later on.
Fair enough.
Student representative report.
All right. Past information, I have Giving Turkey, our annual Giving Turkey event took place in November. It was used to collect donations for the North Brookfield Food Collaborative. Students were encouraged to drop off items in a teacher's bag. At the end, at the end of the month, the teacher with the most items donated had to wear a turkey costume on Wednesday, November 27th. Our winner-loser was Miss Wong. Christmas in North Brookfield.
We've got pictures before.
I do not have a picture.
Aw.
Sadly.
Only when Mr. Deary knows the word, you know?
Christmas in North Brookfield is our biggest and most popular event of the year. As you may know, this event is an event that we pull, that we put together with Tabby LeBlanc. As always, we had games, raffles, concessions, and more, all for the community. Our goal for this event is to make it as successful as it has been in the past. Our chairs for this event were Whitney Reno, Abby Lindberg, and Dayton Ford. Giving Tree, our annual Giving Tree is currently taking place. This year, we are collecting donations for Abby's House in Worcester. List of items to donate were sent out in email, and there are also lists posted around the school. This is happening until next Friday, December 20th. Upcoming information, I have Unity Week. Our annual Unity Week is coming up in February. This event is used to enhance our sense of community as a school and to show support for all different types of people, from members of the LGBTQ+ community to the people with special needs and just everyone's individuality. Conferences and field trips. We have the Hyannis trip coming up in March and Spring Conference in April. Our social medias, we invite all community members to follow our social media accounts to keep up with all NVHS Student Council activities and events. Our accounts are Instagram @NVstuko and Facebook @NVstuko. Student Council meetings, all meetings are open to the school and community. Meetings are typically every other Monday in the high school kiva. Please feel free to join us if you have anything that you would like to discuss or just see how things are run. Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Quick question, what, what is Abby's House for those of you who don't know?
I believe... I'm not entirely sure.
I believe it's a women's shelter.
I was gonna say that, but I was not entirely sure. I am pretty sure that's correct.
It's attached to a really cool old church in Worcester.
It's a women, women, children's shelter.
Yep.
Great. Thank you again.
Yep.
So the next item is staff departures, and I guess that's kind of mixed in with superintendent's usual report, but given that there is this concern raised about special ed class departures, I'd just like some clarification on that. Is any, do you have any comment on that? I guess there are three individuals that left.
Three individuals from that classroom, correct.
Was there anyone to work in that classroom besides those three?
Not directly, no. I'm not sure what you're looking for me to clarify. I'm not being obtuse with that statement, but there's always so much I can say about personality issues. I can tell you that all three staff members left on their own accord.
Is anyone else in the, on the school committee concerned that the whole classroom left?
I'm a little concerned about the safety portion of this to... And I have like a million questions, so I'm gonna try to just get the first couple that come to my head. Is, I mean, is there a procedure for them to follow if they are hurt on the job? Is there a procedure if there, you know, there's an issue that can't be controlled? Where they can get help and where they, you know? I know we can't, we can't talk about individuals in particular, but, you know, are there procedures and where they follow?
Yes, so there's procedures for both when a staff member gets hurt, but also when we're dealing with a student's escalator that may need to be restrained. So there's a lot of things that have been put into place, specifically this year, where we rotated teams of people through to support that student's need. I will say that when you restrain a student, that is, that is the last resort, right? That's not something we go to in time one. But this particular classroom is a classroom that works with our students who have challenges with behavior at times, and this is, this is the classroom that would be necessary to support those students. And part of the, of the role of all the educators in that classroom is at times to facilitate every part of restraint. So to answer your question, there's been a lot of work by both Ms. Embry and Mr. Murphy this year to kind of look at the schedules of the staff members who are in there to make sure that we're maximizing the support. The BCBA, who doesn't work directly in that classroom, does work with students who need to have a plan that's adopted for them to support their behaviors. So that person at times was involved with that classroom as well. But I'm just trying to think what else I can share publicly that, to answer so many questions.
I mean, I'm concerned about the, you know, with having that number of people leave and then the safety of the classroom and the students themselves, you know, the students and the teachers themselves. You know, it, it kind of sounds like a little bit of a cry for help, so I, I just... I'm concerned in that way.
Yeah, and I, and I hear your concern, and I want to be very clear that at no time do we want any student or staff member to get hurt. Whether they're supporting a student, engaging in a restraint... You know, I, I can never guarantee that will never happen. There are situations where a student may, or a staff member may accidentally get hurt by administering the restraint, but there is training that these staff members go through, and there's yearly recertification to make sure they are abreast of how you administer the hold, the timelines around those holds, how do you rotate in and out? And that's one of the parts that we worked on this year, is making sure that staff members on number two don't rotate out of that environment while they're supporting that student. So they weren't in there for an extended period of time because both the students and staff may get tired. If they're in a classroom, a small room, for an extended period of time, we want to make sure that those staff members are staying fresh to support the student to de-escalate the situation.
Okay, thank you.
How many times are we talking about restraining? Well, I guess you really can't answer that, but the question that I have is what's the procedure when a restraint is given? I know that there's certain things that have to be administered, like filled out and then reported to the state.
Yep, correct. And we do that, and Mr. Murphy does that whenever there's a restraint. They have a debrief for the team to discuss what happened, and then if a form is filled out, it's sent to the state. That's our, that's our protocol. It's what we do on a regular basis.
So then we should have numbers of how many times?
Yeah, yeah, we have to, we have to submit numbers to the state every year. So it's something that they track, that Desi tracks for all schools, for all districts.
Does it separate or is it just a group number? You know, if it's one child or if it's maybe, you know, ten children?
I don't know. I think, I think they just segregate by school. So you'll be able to see like elementary school versus junior high school.
And you can just look that up on there, Desi?
I don't know if you can just, you can't look it up, no. Because this, no, there's, there's names involved with these, this recording. So at the end of the year, you'll be able to look at how many restraints, you know, were done for the school year. You can't look at it in real time because there's a lot of confidential information in those forms that we get to see.
Sure, right. I mean, there's a report for how many times there are bullying reports too, and that's a number you can find, I know, readily online. So why couldn't you have the restraints? Because it's just a numeral.
I can't answer that.
If it's reported to the state, then I would imagine it's filtered by the state back to whatever outlet. If it's available on the website, then, then there would be... I'm sure there's legalities that Desi has to follow for, because that's kind of a separate issue automatically, but, I mean...
If you're going to report how many bullying issues there have been, and it's just a numeral, I don't understand why you couldn't say how many times restraints. I think, I want to look into that for next meeting. And I think that it would be helpful to find out what kind of number we're looking at in terms of restraints being that a whole classroom. It's a numeral. I'm not asking how many... If I, if this school district is administering a number that's in the double digits or the triple digits or something like that, I think that's important being that we have 400 and something students. I think that would be important for us to know as a group. We don't have to have any names or anything like that. Do you not agree?
The latest publicly available state report is 2022 to 2023.
So it is public? You said?
Yeah, at the end of the year, it is public. So that's 2022 to 2023, so we're now 23 to 24. So I don't know when they released last year's numbers. So we're recording for 24 to 25 presently.
So...
So you just get, you just get a broad number. You don't, that gives no clarity into, into how many students are involved, how many... Because it says number of students restrained, total number of restraints, total number of injuries.
Mr. Murphy or Ms. Embry, is, is that number broken down for each district in the year as far as... I know obviously the names are not published, correct, but is it, is it broken down even more granular than just the overall number?
My experience and understanding is that it's not. It's what we reported as, I think, as it's being shared now, like with the 22 to 23, because that's confidential student information, and if it's confidential or identifiable information, they don't report it to that degree because they need to protect the student's confidential information.
Tim has it all.
It would be set up in the same way that it is, that it was just read out, so it's...
So it's how many students, how many times?
It says number of students.
That's consistent for every school district in the Commonwealth, right?
So it is broken down a little bit?
But you don't, but there's no clarity as to how many, you know, how many were caused by which one or, you know, how many, how many... This is the numbers of injuries, but it won't necessarily say X amount happened to so-and-so or, you know, it's just a broad number.
I still think that would be helpful information for us to have. Am I the only one who thinks that?
But, so what, what? What would it accomplish, though? Other than knowing...
We have, we have an account from a former employee that says they didn't feel safe in the classroom since last year. I don't see how that's not valuable information.
Well, okay, so my, my position is what, what do you expect the committee to do about it when it's already something that's regulated by the state? There's already policies and procedures in place that need to be approved by the state. So if we're already following, I would assume, already following the guidelines and strictures of Desi and whatever other certifications there may be, I would, I would like to assume that it's all being done by the book. What more is there to do? Or simply providing, or doing the best for the students per their situation? And if, if those students themselves are more difficult than others, then that's, that's the student, that's the uniqueness of the situation.
And there's a point that a student is not appropriately serviced here in the town if the problems are too much, the difficulties, the struggles are too much for the town to handle. And we have to trust that the school and the administration is making sure that that child is getting the education that they deserve in the safest environment for them and for the staff. As part of this restraint system, is there notification to the parent?
Yes, there is.
So you have to immediately call, and then you have to send a letter to the parent within three days. And that is being called.
Okay. I just, I feel like with, if it was one, one person who left, you know, it would be one thing, but we've got multiple people leaving at one time and... I don't know, I think it kind of makes a statement.
High quality too. High quality providers, teachers and providers, so...
It just, you know, I feel like there's a statement made here. So, you know, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable about, you know, whether this child, whether this classroom is being, you know... If they all left, you know, what are we providing the proper education for this child? If it's one child in particular that... Or the children in this situation, so... Just concerned.
I agree.
Any other comments, questions?
No, that's all.
Great, thank you. School committee reports, anything on, well, I guess regionalization update is...
Yeah, we take that off the minutes, so the last one. Yeah, so, I don't know. I'm assuming that everyone that watches this at home also watched the Quaybog one, which happened at the exact same time that we were voting on this, but... You know, my takeaway was, at least I felt all right because I was kind of... I was there early on, but I was never really part of that regionalization committee, so when Ron left, I took his spot, and I was happy to hear the chair of the committee say almost all the same stuff I told you guys. So I was like, oh, good, at least I was right. And then, yeah, they, as a district, voted it down. So we are back on our own little island here in North Brookfield.
I'd just like to say, nothing against the committee, but I'm a little disappointed that they didn't give the opportunity to the people of their, the towns they represent to make decisions. That's, that's my, my little take on it.
I agree with you. It was, it's, eventually the towns make the decision, and I don't think it was our spot. I think I said it at the meeting, it's not really our place to put a stop to that at that point. It's to put it to the taxpayers that will actually have to pay for it.
And the vote was six to three, so that we weren't the, wasn't it? And so you weren't the only one that thought that, I think, when I watched the meeting? And felt like they should leave it up after all this discussion, and at least give the towns a chance to say.
Right, and I think, I think if it had gone to that level, then, you know, the look, looking into like a, a re-investigating the potential outcomes of it, you know, they're, they're concerned about, you know, financial aspects and so forth. That, you know, we, all we have is all numbers from the original exploratory committee. So given that that stuff was outdated, I don't think it was fair to make a decision based on outdated numbers, but...
One of the, one of the numbers they were basing it on was not the outdated ones, the fact that they had heard that North Brookfield is broke. That was one of the things that they were discussing in the meeting, so... So even though whether they didn't have accurate numbers as to anything else, they knew that North Brookfield doesn't have much money right now.
I will say this, it's, even though we've kind of been in like a weird limbo over the last couple of years as this process has gone on, the impression that I get here in this school is the administrators are... They weren't looking at that as a prospect. So I think all the planning and the strategic planning we did last year, all that stuff was based on North Brookfield continuing to be its own school because you can't just plan for a regionalization. So I think, in that sense, we're prepared as we go forward to continue functioning the way we are and make improvements based on our own, as I said, our own little educational island here in Central Mass, which is, which is good. It's better than if we were caught off guard and we're planning for something else.
Yeah.
Are we looking to perhaps talk to any other districts or... Oh, this is pretty much a dead, dead conversation or...
I don't know. We, so the original, the original study that was grant-funded was a report basically on all the districts around us that made sense, and it was decided that Quaybog was the best fit for us to, to join that district.
Yeah.
So they would have to redo that whole study because things have changed a lot in the districts since then.
And there's no grants for that, they said, or isn't that what, there's no grants for that, right?
The one is not as, it's not as readily available when you're doing it again.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And again, that, that took five years, that whole process. So, you know, the first talks, I mean, I guess if you want to go back in time, the first talks of regionalization were the 1950s. So it took us 60 years to actually get to the point when we were ready to do one. So I think within the next 60 years, we'll have a real resolution as to how this is going to be.
And I won't, I won't be on the school committee about that. It's okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, financial reports.
So I have attached, well, up to date financial reports for your view. I did not attach the warrants. We, I'm trying to think, why we didn't do that this month? But, so I just, we just attached a monthly report, which is what we've been doing for the past year and a half. Danielle just left with any questions I can answer?
Yeah, is it part of the teacher's contract that they get reimbursed, reimbursed for any of their continuing ed?
Yes, yes.
Is there a cap on any of that?
There is, there is.
Because it was expensive when they gave them.
There's a cap that's based on the state university model, so I think we look at, we use Worcester State, for example, as kind of the, the number we use.
Okay. Okay.
But there is a, a threshold for every year, for two years that they can get reimbursed.
Okay.
So it's not just that well.
Any other questions or comments on the financial reports? All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, all right. So this, as we've discussed a little bit already, I just added the additional hires and the departures from the districts over the past month. Additionally, and I've been talking about this now for a little bit, at some point in their future, I'll give a more detailed kind of presentation around the, our advanced pathway designation. But we learned in the summer third that we were accepted to part B of this, of this process. It's a very lengthy process as we kind of looked at. Last year, we instituted a work-based learning project for our seniors. We had about six students who worked at FlexCon. That was the kind of, at the ground level to start this, this work to get students excited to advance manufacturing pathway. So part A, essentially, we had to kind of outline kind of the next steps, looking at our curriculum, looking at what we're going to do for our course offerings, for our program studies, our work-based learning program, which I just mentioned, what else we would do to enhance these opportunities. So part B is due in early February. We're very excited about this, this process. I know Mr. Deora has been working very hard with his team as well. We are slated to do some tours of FlexCon for our juniors and seniors come January, so they see this whole facility. But we're excited to give kids the opportunity to look at the advanced manufacturing as both a potential career pathway, but also a college pathway upon graduation. So a lot more to be said about this, but we are the next step of this process. Moving on, we've also done a lot of work the last couple of years with Project Lead the Way. We've talked about some of the seventh curriculum we phased in, but also the 1-8 organization or foundation, which this past year we adopted Open SciEd for our real school science. Another great opportunity came up through Open SciEd, not for curriculum in this case, but for our, for teacher collaboration, for our teachers to go out and see other teachers at other districts around the Commonwealth and around the, the country, what's working and what programs that 1-8 offers are, are working across the country and what can we adopt and bring back to our schools. So we've identified a couple of teachers who are using the, the curriculum that we're going to send out to some, some schools out of Boston. And there'll be a, a two-day overnight kind of visit to a district today and later, where we can, we can show our educators what else is out there and hopefully bring back some great ideas for our students. So that was just under $5,000, that, that grant opportunity that we will support some of our learning for our teachers. And then last but not least, again, something we've been working on for, for several months now, the Handle With Care initiative, which we are partnering with the North Brookfield Police Department. This is just another layer that we can, we can make sure we are letting our, our staff know when a student comes into school potentially in crisis, that we can support that student the best we can. And what this is simply is, is this is a way that if, if the police need to report to a house and there's a student at that house where there's some sort of situation happening, that they will send a text to a school official, in this case, a building principal or adjustment council, let them know, simply the message is handled with care. There's no confidential information. It's a student name and it's handled with care. Then the principal or adjustment council will notify the staff that have these, these students that this student may be coming in in distress and that we can better support him or her throughout the school day. This, again, this is, this is something that's being used by several local school communities. And in, there's, I think we have 42 states that have adopted Handle With Care as something they use to support their students. So we are going to roll this out with fidelity when we come back from the holiday break. We had a meeting with DA Early's office and also with Chief Smith last week to discuss the kind of final steps. And this should be up and running on January 3rd when we return. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Administrator's report. Who wants to go first?
I don't mind, I can go first. So I started with the Star of the Month celebration that we do each month. So N B S celebrates one student from each class once a month for being a model of star behavior. Teachers nominate a student for the description of their positive impact on their class. I call the parents and set up a surprise breakfast where students are given a special $10 start block and a certificate of achievement. I take a selfie with them and post it on a Star of the Month board in the main hallway of the school. And then obviously families take photos up there. Their child usually with me and that goes either on the mantle of the refrigerator at home. So I did put a big list. We are celebrating on Wednesday, so any students out there watching, don't look at the list because our December recipients are on there. But these are all the students in each grade that we have honored already. And three examples on the bottom of some of the selfies that are on our board in the school, which is fantastic. It's one of the first ones when you walk in across from the cafeteria. So we have many kids that are positive peer role models and many more coming through the pipeline at our school, which is fantastic. Next up, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Cool Kids Choir. They had their end of year performance on December 10th in our auditorium. Over 20 students performed in a packed house. The show started with a solo by a fourth grader, Mitchell, and then another solo by a kindergarten, Fallon. The rest of the choir joined in and they performed five more songs. It was a lot of hard work by the coordinators, Bonnie Melner and Channing LeBlanc, and it really showed the quality of their work. It was fantastic performance. The, the kids did an amazing job. Like I said, to get a packed house at this time of year with everyone being so busy, it was just, it went to just the love in that auditorium and the hard work the kids did. It was an amazing event. And last but not least, just wanted to talk about our I L T program. So I L T is Instructional Leadership Team. So this year, we broke up our school into four leadership teams. So we have a K through two E L A, a K through two math, a three through five E L A and a three through five math. So we've already had some rich conversations around aligning a K through five writing identity, aligning our intervention block delivery tools, sharing inter-reading best practices and other pedagogical techniques in the classroom around inter-reading. This has been a valuable time for our teams. We're going to continue to reflect and revise our practices to deliver the best classroom learning environment for our students. On this, we've had Dr. O'Rourke, our new instructional coach, be a part of I L T. With her background, it's, it's really led, a big part of that writing identity was her hard work through our RACE writing rubric that we're now starting to use alongside inter-reading in the classroom. So it's been a really great addition this year. And we meet every other week, so twice a month. That was it? No, John's next.
Congratulations to all the stars of the month, including my daughter.
Congratulations.
Quick question, what is, when you say writing identity, what is, what is meant by that?
Sure, so I think as a school, classrooms were doing different things when it came to writing. So teachers had them using different graphic organizers. So there was no real through line, like an identity as our school with a writing program. So now, I, I always say like, students shouldn't have to learn how to learn. So now when you learn the race response organizer and even starting down in K one, two, three, it's just going to through line all the way up. So that way we have an identity as a school. Every classroom you walk in, you'll see race response rubrics. So race is, restate the question, answer the question, cite evidence and explain your answer. So that's now in each classroom. And we have age-appropriate ways to organize that thinking throughout.
Great. Any other questions or comments on Mr. Murphy's report? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Deora.
All right. All right, so at the high school, we have our new math intervention program underway. This was used by students who are identified through R E B C A S, map testing and class performance for tier support during our Flex Bar. Students in grades six, nine and 10 were identified and will be using this program. For the next five weeks, these students will use the online platform Freckle to receive specialized introductory instruction for math. In January, we will again do a map test, reanalyze the students and where they're at. And then we're going to provide E L A support for selected students so they'll have tier support for E L A during the Flex Bar. Dante already mentioned, and so the superintendent, December 7th was our annual Christmas in North Brookfield. This year, we're excited to have it at the high school. Lots of fun by everybody. I just want to give a special thanks to Dante and the student council and the high school band for their great performance during that time. Also on December 7th, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, our very own second lieutenant, John McNeil, and the U S Army Reserves did their Operation Holiday Drive, Toy Drive. They collected over 200 toys for children in need throughout Worcester County. And then the day ended with a rock march. Some family members joined us along with the members from the Army Reserves to march down to the police station where we gave the toys there. And then we were met by the district attorney, Mr. Early. Saturday, December 13th, we had our holiday PJ dance for students in grades six to 12. The event was sponsored again by student council, attended by our students. They had food, fun and dancing. It was a great way to get ready for the holidays for our students. And then I would also like to invite everyone to our holiday band concert on December 19th. We have two shows down in the auditorium in Mr. Murphy's school. Our first show is going to go from 11 until about 11:45. And then our second show will be 11:45 till 12:30. And then finally, we also like to invite school committee members, if you're around, on Friday. I think we started this tradition two years ago. It's the Bring Your Mug for Hot Cocoa event on December 20th.
The time.
What's that?
I was looking for a time.
Oh, I'm sorry. So in the morning, so we're going to start around nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Thank you, I forgot to put that in there. And so we would love to have you. If you don't bring your own mug, we have mugs to provide for you. But it's lots of fun when these kids bring their own mugs and then it's great. It's a great setup. The kids have snacks and they fill their mugs up with hot chocolate, which is a great way to connect before we break for the holidays.
Thank you.
And that is my report.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Ms. Emmerich?
So in early November, myself and Mrs. Brennovich, we were invited to participate in a professional opportunity offered by P C G, which is the company that we work with for our new I E P system, Ed Plan. And this professional opportunity brought together other school districts from across the Commonwealth who also use Ed Plan to share their work and experiences in what's called a community of practice model to provide feedback and recommendations to P C G to assist with ongoing improvements to the system. It was really a great opportunity to connect with, with districts across the Commonwealth. It did also offer us an opportunity to learn about the additional system improvements that the company is working on to support districts in their work with a new I E P platform. So it's been very supportive. They really were quite interested in our, in our feedback and our questions. And so we are going to participate in future meetings during the school year as part of this ongoing, exciting professional opportunity. Our Title I reading teachers and K eight special education teachers are participating in a reading training opportunity from Imagine Learning this week, which will offer an additional reading resource to use in their work with students. And then finally, we were notified by D E S I that we will be taking part in a review of our English learner education program. And that's done every six years in a rotation. Our review is scheduled to take place during the '25, '26 school year. And then in preparation, D E S I will be holding a training session in January for districts who are assigned to this cohort for that school year. And during that session, they're going to share more information about the process and our preparation activities that we will participate in that lead up to our review that is scheduled for next year.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Emmerich. We have a report from the new director of buildings and grounds. We have maintenance items. They're going to be working on sidewalks from both elementary and high school. Reviewing fire department recommendations for both schools. Working with Schneider Electric on H V A C in both schools. At the elementary school, school surplus, removal of books from the library. I guess it's probably old, outdated stuff. So Mrs. Anamitis is inventorying the books and, yeah, says removing the damaged and older books that are outdated.
To their credit, there are some books in that library that I think were there when I was here in elementary school. And the fact that they're still around is a testament to the, the care they've gotten over a lot more years.
He's trying to say you're old.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, well, I don't have to say it.
He's older than he's ever been.
Yeah, every day, seems like I get older.
So that'll, that'll free up space for newer books, I guess. And I don't know what she has planned there, but it's a good, a good path to take.
Well, I like this fact that it says there's a separate letter and documents that will come outside of this update. So I'm interested to see what they have to say.
And the high school gym floor was refinished during the Thanksgiving break. District truck is back from repairs due to a delivery truck backing into the side of it. New work order system for maintenance IT being evaluated. Researching vendors for replacing the current playground equipment. I'm sure the kids will be happy about that. Currently soliciting quotes to repaint the driveways around the elementary school. Working on a 10-year capital expenditure plan, a facilities maintenance plan. And he has enumerated here six steps. Conduct the facility's audit, prioritize maintenance tasks, develop a preventative maintenance schedule, assign roles and responsibilities, implement a work order system and monitor, review and adjust the plan. And working on a standard operating procedure for custodian and maintenance personnel.
He's busy.
Seven bar.
Nice.
And then we have a technology update from our technology coordinator, Zachary Durridge. When did he start?
I saw it last month.
Last month.
Yeah.
Several teacher and staff test ops have been upgraded. Proposal will be put together for more comprehensive upgrade. All my progress reports going out on the 13th of December. Report cards reported one percent out on the 8th of November. The Handle With Care form has been added into the Google Drive. 10 additional N E C phones, I'm assuming those are just regular wire phones.
Just our regular phones.
They will no longer be available as a 31st, so I guess we're getting our system muted replacements before they render obsolete. Eventually, we will need to do a full system upgrade. And Clever is being integrated into our workflow with, working with Emily O'Rourke. What is Clever?
Clever connects, you have multiple software programs that students have access. Clever kind of brings them all together, so students have really easy access to everything with the push of one or two buttons.
Great. Any questions on the maintenance or technology updates?
So on the technology with the phone system upgrade, would they actually go to a, a regular?
would they actually go to a, a regular, old-fashioned phone system? Or would they use like a sharedware type of a thing, where?
Cover the string.
Pardon?
Cover the string.
My thought is it might be more expensive to do, even cover the string.
Cover the string too, but.
Might, yeah, it might be more expensive to do an actual phone system versus it be shared with a kind of a thing. Something to think about.
Great. All business, we have the Title IX bullying policies.
So I sent these out a few days prior, and I asked to put them in this packet as well. We had two reads of these policies through our policy subcommittee in the last two months. Adopting the timeline language that is nationally recognized and designating members of our faculty and staff to designate roles within that, those processes. And then obviously, our bullying policy as well, making sure that's up to date with the most relevant language to support students who may be involved with an act of bullying. So we, like I said, we went through two reads of these policies, received feedback from the subcommittee. We made changes, and what you're seeing in your packet tonight are the policies for your view and hopefully for your vote, so we can adopt these policies, these changes. I did attach a few memos that we shared throughout the course of this process, updating the subcommittee on some terminology, for example, that, that was kind of new to the process. So just explains what some of those terms mean. And then kind of, the second policy, or excuse me, the second memo, which was dated October 21st, kind of talks about some of the revamp, the revamping that the Title IX policy went through over this past summer, that we are looking to adopt as well.
So are these in effect now? We have to vote on them if they have to be?
We have to vote on, you have to vote on them first. They're not in effect yet.
I'm glad to see that you addressed the aggressor language and bully, bully, the aggressor and bullying as terms. I'm sorry, to see that the state insists on aggressor being a designation for someone who decides to fight back, but there's not much you can do about it.
Yeah, that's one that we talked about, and I guess.
Yeah, I didn't, well, I mean, I'm just, I wasn't on that committee, so I'm glad to see that it was addressed, because it was something that I was, you know, concerned about.
Then, yeah, there had been a public complaint in the past, and, but that is the language that the state requires, and we are legally obligated to abide by the same language, or to utilize the same language, so. Any other, oh, first of all, could I have a motion to approve the Northbrook Field Public Schools Title IX and Bullying Policies as presented?
I'll move to approve the Northbrook Field Public Schools bullying Title IX as prevented, presented?
Prevented, that's the goal.
I second that.
Any, any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to talk about the Title IX designee, is that what they call officer? Is that what it's called? Title IX officer, the role of the coordinator. So that's you, Dean, Ms. Emery?
Yes, that would be me.
So if someone comes to you with something that they feel that falls into these categories, then what's your next step?
So I would follow the procedures that are outlined in there. So that would be from the review of the complaint and then following the procedures that are noted in there, in the policy, is that what?
And go through the language, it's not necessarily like a, it's not if-then, it's like a algorithmic kind of thing.
It's got a, on page seven, there is a, section two. It's on our PDF, it's page 54. Filing a Title IX formal complaint, that's a step-by-step outline of the process, and not only the process of filing the complaint, but also the steps required to be taken by the administration through the process, documentation and.
This is all taken from DSE?
Yes.
Includes appeal process and things like that, too.
And these are adults and students, this covers?
Yes.
Yes.
Any staff of the district, including ourselves? It's about, it's about ten pages of procedures.
Yeah, it's pretty thorough, yeah, and I don't miss much. And this will be in the student handbook?
If, once it's, if, once it's adopted, it'll be on the webpage, and then it'll be, yes, it'll be in the student handbook.
So this will be when a child signs up, the parent says that they read it, right? Isn't that how you do it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was, there was some language this summer, when staffs were returning, that they had to go through that was already the overview of what the new national language is, even prior to us adopting it as a district. I mean, this is a federal statute, this isn't just through DSE or the state. So our staffers went through that overview through our exit program in the summer, and then students had to review it in the student handbook.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All in favor of approving the Northbrook Field Public Schools Title IX and Bullying Policies?
Aye.
Aye. Any new business? I believe so. And we don't have anything for executive session, so. I'll move to Jared.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Happy vacation.